I would like to call the June 11th National Board of Education meeting to order. It is 7:03 and we are at the Nashville High School North Lecture Hall. Could the Clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Mosher?
I'm here.
Mrs. Oden?
Here.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Ms. Ho Hensy?
Here.
Ms. Van Twiver?
Here.
Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Porter?
Here.
Ms. Sweeney?
Here.
Mr. Gillis is not here. Other attendees, Dr. Mosley? Dr. McKinney?
Here.
Is here. Ms. Ogara is here. And we also have Alderman Dowd and Alderman McCarthy in attendance. We have a quorum. Madam Chair.
We do have a quorum. Thank you. We will have Mr. Guarino read the prayer and could Ms. Porter lead us in the pledge?
Can you please stand?
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to lead this.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mosher joins us via telephone tonight. He's part of this meeting. Mr. Mosher, are you all, are you by yourself?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Also, Mr. Donovan has joined us at 7:05. And Mr. Gillis is also here.
And Ms. Sweeney.
Ms. Sweeney.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have a presentation on the middle school construction renovation project and I believe Alderman McCarthy is here and Alderman Dowd is here for that presentation. So I don't, do you want to come up here and take a seat?
Excuse me, Ms. Guarino. One of our members just joined us.
I already said that. I already, I already acknowledged him.
Oh, I thought you said he wasn't here. I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm going to begin, Madam Chair, if I can begin. Okay. First of all, thank you. This is a very exciting endeavor. When you first start these discussions around new building construction projects in the district, you always go into thinking you have a plan, but then after your meeting with various other individuals, you start to have deeper conversations, you quickly realize there's another plan that exists out there. So tonight, I just want to talk to the board and the Alderman can certainly jump in once we're done with the presentation in terms of the context, in terms of the proposal for the construction project in the Nashville Public Schools. You know, Sean, you're welcome to come up here too as well if you need to. So when we, there are a couple of projects we have been discussing here at the board level. We've discussed Elm Street. We've discussed Mount Pleasant. We've discussed Birch Hill and we discussed Main Dunstable. So for the public, that's three of our elementary schools and one of our middle schools. And Elm Street is our largest middle school in the district. For quite some time, we have had general discussions about the construction projects for the public schools in Ashore about what's the best way to approach this. So on June 5th, we had a meeting with the Mayor, Alderman, myself, Sean Smith, individuals from City Hall and from the school department and we really started to have some discussion around priorities. We had some discussion around the city bond rates. What is our top priorities in terms of what, what building in our school district is really in the most need? And finally, a little bit about, you know, as much as you want to build and have great schools and everyone would love a new school, but there are also some limitations in terms of what's a priority as well as our aspirations. And so by far, here at the board, you've heard it many times, is Elm Street is the most critical needs in terms of a building. There is always that discussion of, well, this new construction versus renovation and that's not the purpose of this, this discussion, but it is clear that Elm Street is, in terms of the building structures for the, for the public schools, Elm Street is a top priority. So when you delve into this more, you look at what projects will bring about the best results for students citywide and more importantly, what creative ways can the district and the city officials approach this new construction project that brings equity throughout the district? And so one of the things that we did is that we looked at, during the discussion we had down at City Hall, there were some questions that were asked and it really stems from the construction project of the high schools that happened maybe about 10 years ago, is that correct? Alderman McCarthy?
Getting closer to 20 now.
Wow, 20 years ago. But one of the things that Alderman McCarthy mentioned, and I thought was very poignant, is that he mentioned that there were some kids who were opting not to go to our high schools and to find out why they weren't going to the high school. And one of the questions that arose during the discussion was, how many kids are we losing in our, in our middle schools? They're not opting to go to our middle schools for reasons stemming from special education program. Some of our, our parents are opting to homeschool and other parents are opting to, to go to private placements and other facilities within the, in the city. So when we looked at the data, just purely looking at the data, we noticed a couple of things. Number one, we noticed about approximately 448 students did not or are not attending our middle schools this year. We also noticed that in terms of our special education costs, we do send about 17 kids out of district placement, that's about $900,000, at the middle school level. So just looking at that data, there are some thoughts that come to my mind is, number one, we want those kids back in our public schools. They're our kids. And number two, how do we attract those kids? Number three, looking at the out of district placement, is there anything that we can do as a district to be more creative, to be more inviting, to have those kids, those special education kids, come back to our district? Whether it's spacing, whether it's staff? So those are the questions that we start to think about when we approach this construction project. So as we were talking, in terms of the word equity, how do we bring equity throughout the district, but not just looking at Elm Street, but also looking at all of our middle schools? And so the discussion quickly moved away from not just Elm Street, but for all of our middle schools. And so what, what I am and what the administration, along with the city, is asking the board to do is to look at not just Elm Street, but at all of our middle schools in terms of providing equity throughout the district. And so part of the construction evaluation moved away from just slowly Elm Street, but also to include all of our, our middle schools. So what does that mean? It means that we would be looking to explore classroom capacity to support 21st Century for our kids at the, at the middle school level. We look at the word, I use the word equity and that's not to keep using it over and over again, but when we look at our class sizes for our middle schools, we look at that district-wide, we do see some inconsistencies. So how do we equalize that? More importantly, when you're thinking about a middle school model, we were thinking, how do we expand this project to include all of our middle schools, to have flexible, flexible learning facilities to, to facilitate what I call, I call it streamy, so it's science, technology, reading, engineer, arts, math, and the little I is for innovation. The capacity to, to, to support extracurricular activities. What I mean by that, if we look at all of our middle schools, our middle schools have different facilities and different areas where, for instance, at Elm Street, you have two, two large gyms, that's part of the main gym, along with another gym. So during the winter months, the Elm Street students have a very different experience than the kids at Fairgrounds Middle School, where the gym doesn't have as much flexible space. The other thing that I think is important, when I became superintendent, it became very clear to me that we really need to look at our special education space for our middle school kids. And I don't want to get into specifics in terms of spacing for, for each middle school, but certainly I'd like us to really look at better spacing, better facilities, and this came up during the building discussion around our kids who are medically fragile, our kids in a wheelchair. Those spaces need to be looked at district-wide. Right now, there's inequities in terms of how we can support them in each of our, our middle schools. And finally, I thought, you know, what's important is that we, as a, as a city, with the improvements of all of our middle schools, could not only just have a rigorous curriculum around academics, but also I would love to really expand and have that vertical, that horizontal alignment of our CTE programs that connect with our middle schools. And right now, I think we do a great job, this is not a criticism or anything like that, but I know that we can do better. I know that we can make that connection a lot stronger. So through this proposal, and I'll get to what I'm asking for from, from the board, I believe that we can strengthen those programs to have better connection to our, our middle schools. So part of what you have in part of your board packet is that you saw a draft. You saw a draft of what I would consider the middle school construction project and what we're proposing and asking the board to vote on in terms of approval is for the JSSBC to explore this project. This project doesn't just bring a new building to the Elm Street parents and students, but it brings equity throughout the entire district. And what we're proposing and what we're exploring is really making improvements to all of our middle schools district-wide. All of the middle schools, in a sense, if you think about it, it's probably the only, if we make improvements to all three schools, it's that one, it's that, it's three schools that I know and we all know that every single kid in the Nashville Public Schools will pass through our middle schools. In essence, every single kid will benefit from this project. So the other thing that I want us to look at and, and I'll just kind of jump to this chart here, and this is just a preliminary, preliminary chart, but one of the things that when you look at, we looked at enrollment coming up in 2019, 2020, 2020, 2021. We did a projection about five years out. And so just if you look at the enrollment projections, you also look at, the constant that I used was 448 students, so approximately if we have 448 students who are opting not to attend our schools, but in fact, if they do come back and attend our schools, that number, if you look at the equal division among three middle schools, so if you look at the numbers in the green, you see approximately between 900 to about 1,030, I say 1,040 kids in all of our, our, our middle schools. So what I'm proposing and what I'm putting out there to the public and to the board, that this project has the potential to, what I would say, equalize our population in our middle schools, essentially giving us about 1,000 kids in all of our, our, our middle schools. And right now, we see some fluctuation, I should have included the numbers, but Elm Street probably has about 1,100, Donna's not here. Our, our Fairgrounds has about 700 and some change, 700, and Penachuck's around 700 as well. I can get the numbers to you. But anyways, tonight, what I'm asking is that a vote to approve the proposal to move this construction proposal to the JSSBC for review, refinement, and evaluation. In essence, what this project does, it addresses Elm Street, but it also takes it one step further and provides equity throughout the district for our middle school students and for our programs. In your packet, you see a kind of a timeline for you to refer to in terms of proposal of, of, of when we'd like to start doing it. I know Alderman McCarthy and Alderman Dowd were very instrumental in helping us kind of conceptualize this, but also helping us evaluate when the bonds would be available and how this project fit into the larger picture. I know Sean Smith has done a nice job with making sure that we have the information regarding timelines and projects. So if you have any questions, we certainly have the experts here to address them. Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I think, conceptually, I think it's a good idea. I like the idea of looking at all the middle schools because part of the discussion we had when Mr. Dowd and then Mr. McCarthy joined us was, what if we added a wing on one of the other schools? So now I know that that's going to be integral to the conversation. For myself, if I look at the middle school construction program where you had one master bullet and five numbered one through five? If you could put that up, please? I would like to see something added along the lines of capacity to support inbound tuition placements. I think it's important, we, as you express in number four, that we're able to take care of our own special ed students by providing maybe more services or, so we don't have outbound, out of district expenses. But at the same time, if we're building out capacity for our own special ed, special needs in different areas, it could be CTE as well, that we intentionally plan to accommodate inbound tuition students. And I would also make the case that that's true certainly for the middle school, but I think you have to also think about Brentwood at some point. Right now, that's going to be rental expense for the next several years. I think Brentwood should be considered into this mix. And when I visited Brentwood a few weeks, well, it's probably two or three months ago, we had a very interesting conversation. Right now, we have 12 or 15, or a small number of students there, but that building at one time when it was housed by Suresk and they ran that program, they had 60 inbound students. And those, and speaking to the folks over at Brentwood, they were very clear that they thought there was demand in other districts for a program like Brentwood as out of district for them, which could be an inbound placement to us. And those placements are, well, they're expensive for the inbound district, for the outbound district. So I would ask that something along the lines of capacity to support inbound tuition programs and that Brentwood be part of this mix as well. Thank you. Oh, one other thing. When I looked at the timeline, there are no page numbers here, so it's, let me see if I can tell you where it is. It's the second page in, under middle school construct, middle school construction and renovation project, the second line down, and you know, the timeline is the July to August of 18. It says that the JSB would be comprised of five board members and five Aldermen. My concern is that the five board members constitutes a quorum. And my understanding is, we shouldn't have a quorum in that regard. Now, I don't know if that's four plus one, non-voting member, but I don't believe if their intent is that, and I understand Aldermen have, they have lots of people to spare, they're, you're up to 14, I think. So for them, five people doesn't, is nowhere near a quorum. For us, equal representation, which is obviously the intent, puts that five over the quorum number. And I'm just concerned about that. Can someone address that, please?
Alderman McCarthy?
I'm not sure what the concern is there. The state statute requires that the Joint Special School Building Committee consist of an equal number of members of the Board of Education and the governing body.
To that point, then, four and four, which would meet the state requirement, and then we would not have five members of the board voting to make decisions at JSB, which could be perceived as binding on the board, right? Quorum constitutes?
I mean, they are binding. Once the project goes to JSSBC, JSSBC is the determining factor. This is the way it has always been.
Okay. So you're telling me that there, my concern is unwarranted?
Right now, the JSSBC is five members of the Board of Ed and five members of the Board of Aldermen.
Okay.
And it has been that way for the last three, two or three projects. Prior to that, it was all of the members of the Board of Ed and nine members of the Board of Aldermen.
Thank you.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, and when we had the 18, it was very difficult at times to get a quorum, trying to get that many people. The Joint Special School Building Committee focuses only on school construction projects that have been assigned to them through the, from the Board of Education to the Joint Special. And those are the only things that get discussed. And all the decisions made at the Joint Special don't go back to the Board of Aldermen or they don't go back to the Board of Education. The decisions are made at the Joint Special.
Thank you. Mr. Guarino?
Yeah, I don't think a quorum is a problem. I think a quorum becomes a problem with the right-to-know laws. So I don't think that has anything to do with having a quorum on there. But I would, I would like to ask Dr. Mosley, I believe that this building is going to be a middle school and what was proposed, which was to have special ed students there, these are high school kids, I'm just wondering if that's, you know, and have Brentwood there on the same facility. I'm wondering if that's appropriate. It, to me, it doesn't sound like it's appropriate to do something like that.
The original intent was to focus solely on the middle school. I think the Brentwood is a larger conversation in terms of programming, in terms of location. We also discussed, and again, this is kind of getting off topic, originally, when I first started, there was discussion around Central Office moving to a certain location and then relocating Brentwood to, to where the current Central Office is. So right now, we have a three-year lease for the Brentwood program. There is still discussion around what to do with Central Office and, and at this point, we have about three years to kind of make some deductions or make some decisions on that. If we decide to move Central Office to somewhere else, I think our current building that we're in at Central Office would be sufficient. If that's not the case, then we can explore other endeavors. You know, I'll do what, I'll defer to what the board would like to do, but for this particular presentation and conversation, I, we, I'd prefer it to just stick to the, the middle school and the middle school kids. I'm, I don't mean to, Alderman.
Ms. Ho Hensy and then Alderman Dowd?
Okay. So the motion tonight to approve the administration's proposal to move the construction product, project to JSSBC for review, refinement, and evaluation, does that board come back to us? We haven't decided whether Elm Street's going to be renovated or a new building. So if we throw this into that committee, does that mean the board is relinquishing any voice as nine members over that decision of whether to renovate or reconstruct a new school? I mean, my concern, I don't mind letting them work on these things and coming back to us with details, but I, I think that's a major decision. I thought a similar decision would be with Mount Pleasant Street School. There was a concern of whether or not we rebuild or, I mean, that, that cost is twice the, the cost of the other two elementary schools, which are the open concept. It's easier to change the size of the room, so it's fairly straightforward. My understanding was we would go through ahead with two of those projects because they're easy, but I thought Mount Pleasant was more complicated. Again, I thought there'd be some preliminary numbers and the board would decide, again, which direction to go. So that's my confusion with this proposal on the table tonight.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yeah. So in order to understand that, you have to, you have to look at, at the bond schedule. We pay off about $10 million in, in principal on the debt every year, which means we can extend another $10 million every year and keep the debt service in the city budget flat. So the proposal was, well, why don't we do Main Dunstable and Birch Hill because they're smaller projects? But that pushes out the time when you can do something about Elm Street further into the future. So the, the discussion we've had recently was about if Elm Street is really the worst problem that we have, and I think it probably is, you know, we've, we've made some corrections to Mount Pleasant that keep it a viable school for the foreseeable future. And I mean, Main Dunstable and Birch Hill, there's an issue around the open classroom concepts, but the, there was work done on both of those schools about 20 years ago, which made them much more viable because we've taken care of some of the air quality issues. So those also, I think, can be, can be deferred. And as far as Elm Street goes, what we're asking for is that you put it in the hands of Joint Special to engage an architect and look at costing out the renovations and the, the new school construction. Now, I can, I can tell you from the discussions we've already had with, with Harvey, that for example, to renovate Elm Street with students in place will take four years, to construct a new school will take two. Before that four-year construction can begin, we would have to put approximately 16 portables on the front lawn of Elm Street, convert the gymnasium into a temporary cafeteria and add a temporary kitchen on the outside. All of that would stay there and then go away. That represents somewhere above $4 million worth of investment that produces basically nothing in the final product. So when we look at that and the numbers we've seen for the renovation itself, and these are, people have asked, well, why are these, you know, where are these numbers coming from? Why is this so much more expensive than the, the elementary schools we've done? Bear in mind, the numbers are coming from the same people who did the elementary schools. And they, they are, in the, in the case of Harvey, the project manager Carl Dubois has been with us since he worked at Gilmaine and managed the South High School project. He's probably the most knowledgeable person on this in the state. And his numbers are pretty good. And what I see is, we can invest approximately the same amount of money two different ways. We can invest it in Elm Street and when we're done, we have a school that's still on a four-acre site, is still 80 years old. In the, in the estimates that we've done, we haven't even taken into account the fact that the floors all need replacing, which is another $4 million. There's a question as to whether the structure can withstand replacing the floors without additional structural work at the same time. So that's an open-ended piece. And when you get done, you got a, you got a building that's on a four-acre site, has very little parking, and the classrooms, while they can be made to meet the letter of the state standard for size, because of the cross-section of the building, you're not going to get classrooms that are 900 square feet that are 30 by 30. You're going to get classrooms that are 25 by 40, which is not, you know, ideal layout either. So when I look at what we can invest and what the value is of the end product, I am forced to believe, until some other numbers come out that say differently, that putting the school on the 20-acre site that we have, which by the way, is, is very close to a lot of other amenities in Southwest, like Yiddiki Farm, like the soccer fields at Main Dunstable and a trail network, et cetera, I conclude that that is a better product to have. What we're asking for tonight is to go forward to where we can have the comparison of those numbers so that we can decide numbers so that we can decide which of those options we want to pursue. I don't think anybody's saying that Joint Special would simply go ahead and build a new school. We're simply looking at taking some of the money that's left over from the elementary school projects, engaging an architect and a construction manager, which is a process that takes some time, and getting them on board to help us make those decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd.
And just a few things, and I agree with everything that Alderman McCarthy just said. You spend in somewhere in excess of $60 million to do Elm Street, and it could very well be higher than that. You end up with a building that's not energy efficient, that's still 80 years old, has a lot of problems. And, you know, the question would become, how much is a new school, and how is the money coming out of the national taxpayers better spent, especially going forward? The other thing that wasn't mentioned is that that building is not insulated very well. And part of the cost is to try and insulate it, but you're not going to insulate it like a new building. And it's still not going to be energy efficient. We also intend to go forward with, at least I believe we are, the security upgrades that you had a meeting on not too long ago. Now, those will also address some changes to Birch Hill and Main Dunstable to make them more secure. It doesn't do a lot as far as the Hy-Vac and the petitioning in the classrooms, but it will make the school safer. And I think the safety of our schools, based on everything that's going on, is paramount. It's too bad that we are in that situation, but, you know, if we spend money and save one student, it's well worth it. So also, getting back to the special, the Brentwood, that type of school has evolved over the years. Those of us that have been around for a while, that type of education was provided in the old Nashua High School. And being in the high school didn't work out that well. And that's why they moved it, and it's evolved. And I think if you wanted to put it back in, say, a new middle school, like the one down the south end, you'd have to make it a separate building, so I'm not sure you save anything. So, at least in my opinion, I don't want to go out and try and spend $60 million to convert an 80-year-old building, even the way at the high school there, when we could build a new school for the same or less and have an energy efficient, meet all the educational standards, and be a school that you can draw new students back to, and will have all of the amenities that a new school would have. And also, we'd have to look at, like Penachuk, we're still using portables up there. That's going to change. We're going to get rid of the portables. And so we'd have to do something at Penachuk. And we're not sure exactly what we would do at Fairgrounds, but we'll have to evaluate that as well.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move, I would move to approve the administrative proposal to move this construction project to the JSSBC for review, refinement, and evaluation.
I second it.
Ms. Van Twiver?
Alderman McCarthy, you said that unless the numbers changed for renovation, you know, it seems to me that you've made a case the last time you were here, to me, that it makes more sense to build a new one. So what would be, what kind of figures would it be that make you change your mind from that? I mean, why go through all this when I think most of us, at least I feel that way, that we just ought to go and build a new school?
Off the top of my head, I would agree with you. We don't have definitive numbers, and I think we owe it to the taxpayers of Nashua to understand, you know, what the numbers are like. If you don't get the renovation number, then people will constantly be, well, you spent $50 million on a new school, it would have been $10 million to renovate the old one. And while we may know in our gut that's not true, it's better to have it on paper, and it won't, it won't cost us a lot of money to figure that out. And if it comes out that it is a lot cheaper, then that may tip, you know, which of those we do. I do want to say, I've been thinking about this a lot for the last couple of weeks, and I've thought back, the process to build the two high schools was a while back, and I'd actually forgotten some of the dynamics of it. And one of the important things was, at the same time, we were restructuring the high school program in Nashua. We were going, we wanted to go from 10, 11, 12 to 9 through 12. And we went to, you know, we added the vocational components, we did a lot of other things. And I think it's important to keep in mind, while we tend to concentrate on school buildings because they're big projects, they're a container. It's, you know, it's like a can on the supermarket shelf. It's a way to safely get the product to the person who's going to consume it. But what's inside is what's important. And we really need to understand that. As Dr. Mosley said, we ought to think about what is deficient with our middle school program now, what can we do to make it better, and then work backwards to what does that turn into in terms of what we need to do to the facilities to house that. So, you know, I think inevitably, yes, you reach the conclusion that a new school is more likely to be a better container for that program than the old school. And, but I think it's important to look at the other two schools as well, you know, to look at what's the sort of natural distribution of the kids in Nashua as they go to middle schools and get that to be right. And, you know, what is it that we may need that's different in order to house a middle school CTE program, for example, and more opportunities for education in the middle schools? I think at the end of the day, this is going to be an expensive project.
Oh, yeah.
And as a result, you know, we spent a lot of money on the two high schools. It was $150 million. And we basically sold that to the citizens of Nashua by saying, here's what it's going to do for the education. And if you look at the results before and after it did that, we're getting much better results at the high school level than we had in the previous container and with the previous program. And I think we owe it to ourselves to do the same thing at the middle school.
To help you to come to those decisions, are you asking members of the district head teachers and things like that to help you out with that, those questions, or?
I think that's what will happen. When we did the high schools, there was a tremendous amount of involvement in the sort of transition team. Peg Reynolds was on the committee as a representative from the administration, and she was there all the time throughout. So, you know, I think that some of that, the program discussion belongs to this board. The, how that interacts with the school's construction is something we would ask the staff to tell us about.
Thank you. Alderman Dowd?
Just a few things, going backwards, and turning my mic on. The school designers, the Joint Special's going to handle the mechanics of building the school, but the designers will work with Dr. Mosley and the various people in the district to design what the requirements are inside the school. The Joint Special will ensure that it's built in a timely manner, in a cost-effective manner, and all of that. One of the things with looking at a new school is, we already own the site. When we built the two high schools, we had to buy this site, not cheap. But we already owned the site, and it was put there to build a school. It was planned ahead, and so a lot of that is done. As far as I'm concerned, when you're talking about a project of this magnitude, I don't want anything left to chance. If we're going to be spending $50, $60 million of taxpayers' money, we want it to be fact-based. We want to know what all of the real costs are. And so when we present it, we're coming across from a fact-based decision, and the most cost-effective and best-served for the city. That's a lot of money. So today, also, if we're going to touch all three schools, we want the three schools to be designed to the ongoing middle school concept, so that they are functionally as efficient as they are, hopefully, from an energy standpoint, and that students are in a learning environment that they can grow from and move into the high schools.
Ms.
So, as Alderman McCarthy said, when we built the high schools, the project was probably three times what we're talking about here. And both he and I were on those committees, and a lot of work, but it was all done through the Joint Special.
Ms. Hohensie, and then Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. So if we're not going to use the Elm Street School, are we repurposing it for Brentwood and special ed or something? Do we have anything in mind for that? If we're building a new one for Elm Street, which seems logical, will the Joint Special come back to the board and say, well, we have these three different plans, big, bigger, and biggest? What do you think is suitable? Or does the joint committee decide that with the architect once we figure out the needs? And the final question would be Mount Pleasant. Isn't it a similar rebuild or renovation from, like Elm Street, where the biggest problem is the size of the rooms, and it's very expensive to do it? Is that a school that we're going to build new, or are we going to spend twice as much money renovating that than the other two elementary schools?
Alderman McCarthy?
Yeah, there's a number of questions there. Let me make sure I can get them all. As far as what happens to Elm Street afterwards, I think that's a decision for a later day if we make that. And I think, you know, we need to understand what it would be useful for and what the magnitude is of using it for. If we were to try to use it for Brentwood, it has all the problems that it has as a middle school that would have to be addressed. So we may consider disposing of the property to someone who would convert it to housing, for example, which is, you know, that's an easier thing to do with it than to make it a school again. So we may be able to find somebody who would do that. I think, as I say, that's a decision we would make later on, and I don't, I don't want to get, I don't want to get the middle school project wrapped around the axle over what do we do with this piece of property afterwards. I think it's important to figure out what the right thing is. As far as Mount Pleasant, that is a, that's a long discussion for another day because that one I have mixed emotions on. If I were to look at it simply from dollars and cents, that project, I believe, costs out at $44,000 a seat. So to get one seat in a renovated Mount Pleasant school is $44,000, and that scales up pretty quick. On the other hand, it is a functioning neighborhood school in a neighborhood that needs it. So I don't, I'm not sure I know what to do with that yet. And I guess, you know, it's clear to me that we can't fix it at the same time as Elm Street. We did fix it in such a way that it may cost us some money to keep it up, but not that much, and it will be viable for quite a while to come as an elementary school the way it is. So, you know, my advice would be, let's think about that one down the road and watch for opportunities in the area as to something that might be more viable, but still be a neighborhood school in that neighborhood. And as far as Main Dunstable and Birch Hill, we'll just, we'll fit those into the bond schedule when we can.
Okay, and the part of the question that wasn't answered, and I apologize for three of them, so I didn't want to be called on again, will this committee come back to the board with the plans for the new Elm Street Middle School potentially, and say, these are the options, and are we going to go for small, conservative, middle-size, or large? Or is that something, once we make this, vote on this motion, that the committee decides? I just want to know the logistics of how it works.
Pragmatically, what typically happens is after we've, after the architect has talked to the staff and designed around the program, what you have is large. You know, the original design for the high school had more conference space in it than the Heinz Convention Center. And when you look at the budget at the end of that, you can almost never afford that thing that comes out. So the question is what to take out and what to leave in. So the way we did this with the high school was, the architect came in initially with an estimate that came out to about $175 million. We had them cut program out of it to $125 million. And then we put back about $12 million of things that we viewed as important in that $50 million cut. And I think we would go through a project, through a proposal that's very similar. You know, we'll get options for things that are important, but we may not be able to afford. And then at the end, wind up doing a trade-off to figure out which of those are important enough to put in.
Okay, but then the committee makes those final decisions?
Ultimately, the committee will vote on it. I don't think we would do that in opposition to, you know, and bear in mind, there's five members of the school board on there. So the committee cannot make a decision unless at least one member of the school board agrees with it. So, and I, I mean, I've never seen a case where we would, where we have taken a vote that was lopsided like that.
Thank you.
Alderman Dowd, did Ms. Raymond have her hand up?
I did some time ago, but I think you had said Ms. Hohensie, then Mr. Kaufman, when you had called on her. But I would like to speak at some point, yes.
Well, you haven't spoken. Why don't you speak now?
Thank you. I just, I wanted to be clear on what we're asking with this motion. If the motion does not pass, the project is dead, correct? Because only the JSSBC has the authority to hire an architect and get these quotes, et cetera?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Yes, thank you.
Alderman Dowd?
Just to follow up on the questions that were asked before, if the Joint Special has all of the inputs and makes a sound decision, first of all, the five school board members on the board, on the Joint Special, will come back and be reporting regularly at their meetings as to what's going on. And we will get feedback that way. Ultimately, the decision is a cost issue, and since the bonding goes through the Board of Alderman, we allocate the money. So we, at least in my opinion, and I'm only one Alderman, I wouldn't vote for an allocation that didn't make sense. So it'll boil down to fact-based decision on spending that kind of money. The other thing on Mount Pleasant, there is no option for tearing it down and building a new school in place. Mount Pleasant is located in a historic district, and they're not going to let you touch that building to any great degree. And even the security things that we're trying to put in, if it alters the outside of the building, it's got to go through them for input. Now, they're not the end say, but there's a lot more steps to go through in a historic district. We had a portable at one time outside in the front lawn. That was a war going on until we moved it. So Mount Pleasant has its own challenges, and probably is downstream. The Elm Street project, or the middle school project, is going to be a three- to five-year adventure. If you do the renovation, it's going to be four or five years minimum. It may take some time to get the money. If we, at the Joint Special, take a look at, here's the renovation cost, we'll probably have to bond or use the previous money that we've saved from the other projects, get the architects to give us an estimate, here's the renovation cost, and the possible additional renovation costs if this doesn't work. The floors is one example. That could be significant expense, and even be a risky project from a structural standpoint, they tell us. And even be a risky project from a structural standpoint, they tell us. The floors have to be a lot sounder in a school because of the number of students going back and forth all day long. And then, we would need to get cost for what a new school would cost. Again, with the inputs from an educational standpoint as to how it needs to be designed, and then from a cost standpoint, is what can we afford? But we need those comparing numbers and comparing pros and cons to make a sound decision when you're talking about spending $50 million of taxpayer money or more.
Mr. Kaufman?
In the presentation and in the comments, it was sort of described, well, we can maybe even out the students, is I think, I don't know if those were the exact words, but that was an impression that I got. So if that is a possible outcome of this, and I don't object to that at all, but I do want to ask the question, does that, will that require us to redistrict to reallocate, you know, boundary lines for the various buildings? I mean, we haven't been through that, but I've heard that nobody likes to do that, so.
Alderman McCarthy, and then Alderman Dowd?
So it would at the middle school level. But I guess I'll just go back to, when we have done it in the past, the last major redistricting was about 1992 or thereabouts. And we moved about 350 families from Main Dunstable to Lead Street. That was a very unpopular redistricting. I think if you say, we're going to redistrict and put some kids in Pennechuck, who are now traveling fair distances to school, we're going to put some kids in Fairgrounds, and we're going to move kids, the rest of the kids to a new school, I'm not sure I can figure out who rationally complains about that.
So, part of your answer is kind of comforting in that it's only the middle school that has to get redistricted. And I would make the case, as you suggest, we've got athletic fields now that we didn't have before. You know, we've built out the CTEs. We've, you know, I mean, I think the rationale is going to be a positive one for the community, but I had to ask the question, you know, it's because...
Yeah, and I think the answer is that everybody gets a better deal afterwards than they had before.
Mr. Mosher, do you have any questions at this point?
I've been listening to this very carefully. And as a member of the JSB committee, I am following Alderman Dowd and McCarthy very carefully. And I agree with them 100%. And I'm also a great one for looking at the costs that are involved. And they're right on the money. They're right, they're right there. Because they're living with it all the time as Aldermen. But we are seeing the necessity for the changes that would take place. And also listening to the idea of redistricting. But there's a certain amount that would have to be done temporarily as a new school is being built. Which would then require some further redistricting to a lesser scale. But we can move the kids around, and we have a great transportation. And we certainly have things worked out. After a few, maybe a few minor glitches, but I think it's a very viable plan, and I'm for it. I can see the benefit to the whole thing. And especially that we'd be able to use the new school as part of the magnet to draw the kids back into the schools and get the cooperation from the other schools in the area for the CTE. Wonderful. Love it.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Dowd?
Mike, again. The redistricting is more problematic usually when you're dealing with 12 elementary schools. And you're moving a lot of people. And you're drawing multiple lines all over town. The middle school, if we end up talking a new middle school and renovating to some degree Mount Pleasant and Fairgrounds, I don't think you're going to have that issue. I think it'll, you'll have some, but nowhere near if you were doing all the elementary schools. And the only thing you have to do is the middle school.
You meant Pennechuck.
You meant Pennechuck.
Pennechuck, please. Yeah, Pennechuck, sorry.
Okay. Mr. Kaufman?
Call the question.
Madam President, are we ready for the vote?
Yes, we are.
On the motion to approve the administrative...
Excuse me, we need to vote on calling the motion.
Okay, so we're going to vote on calling the motion. Okay, on the vote to call the motion. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohency?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Okay, so now, we're going to take the vote on the motion. The motion passes to end discussion and vote on the motion. The motion is to approve the administrative proposal to move this construction project to the JS SBC for review, refinement, and evaluation. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohency?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
The motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. And I want to take a moment to thank Alderman McCarthy and Alderman Dowd. They have been extremely helpful. They are so knowledgeable. Alderman McCarthy, I don't know how long you've been on the Board of Aldermen.
I'd rather not say.
Long time, but your experience and your knowledge has been very, very helpful. And Alderman Dowd, same for you. I know you've been on the Board of Education. You understand a lot of our needs. So, thank you both so very, very much, working so closely with us. It's deeply appreciated. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Madam Chair, can we have a brief recess before we move into our agenda?
Yes, could we take a five-minute recess?
Thank you.
Before you do that, Mr. Kaufman asked me before the meeting what was likely to happen with the city budget. And I thought I would comment on that before we leave. It comes before the board tomorrow. I do not believe that we will pass it tomorrow. I think it will be held for the meeting on the 26th. The reason being, between now and then, we will see a report from KRT about what the likely effects of the revale are going to be. A number of members had asked that the Budget Committee, you know, how do we hold this? I think there is some concern about the school budget. And if the effects of the revale look to be not so severe, I suspect there may be some motions to change it. I don't know whether those will pass. I don't know whether those will be made. So I guess my advice to this board is be prepared for a budget that looks just like the mayor's proposed budget with some very small changes to pass in two weeks. And if there is a pleasant surprise with the revale numbers, there may be some changes after that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both so very much. And we will now have a 10-minute recess. I'd like to reconvene the meeting. It is now 8:12. Let's see, Agenda? Is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda? Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, I'd like to remove an email that was sent to the board by Mr. Guarino on Thursday, May 31st, at 9:49 a.m. And I'd like the opportunity to respond to that since through the right-to-know law, we really can't respond to emails because that's creating a discussion which needs to be held in public. So I asked the board indulgence to do that. I mean, you can vote on the rest of the consent agenda and just leave that one thing to be discussed.
Okay, that will be removed from the consent agenda at this point? So is there a motion to accept the rest of the consent?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Roll call.
On the motion to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons? Ms. Hohency?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Nine to zero, I'm sorry.
Items removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Oden. This is an email that was received, that Mr. Guarino sent to the board, to the BOE. It's dated Thursday, May 31st, 2018. And it was sent in 9:49 a.m. to the BOE. The following action was taken by the National Board of Education on March 12th, 2018. And quoting a motion Mr. Guarino moved, seconded by Ms. Timmons, to accept Dr. Mosley's approach to the strategic plan. His Strategic Planning Ad-Hoc Committee, his strategic process and timeline, so voted by roll call, 4-2, nay, Mr. Kaufman and Ms. Hohency. I would like to remind board members that Dr. Mosley's recommendation for the strategic plan, ad hoc committee, his approach, planning process, and timeline, have all been accepted by this board. I would appreciate it that members respect the actions and votes of their fellow members by not trying to undo actions that this board has already taken regarding the strategic plan and the planning process. Delegating board authority to the administration with board representation on the ad hoc committee is not giving up responsibilities or authority, especially in light of the fact that no strategic plan can be finalized without the endorsement of the full board. This is how, in the real world, strategic plans and comprehensive plans are created. You will rarely, if ever, see an entire planning board of any municipality writing as a committee of the whole a municipality's master plan or comprehensive plan. The same holds true for strategic plans produced for school districts. That is why we have staff to rely on their expertise in the industry. There is a saying, lead, follow, or get out of the way. If you have already demonstrated, if you have already demonstrated very ridiculous, unworkable motions that have failed to be passed by the board, that you are not capable of leading, then I suggest taking up one of the other two. I responded to that email simply from a procedural perspective. Any vote by the board can be modified or rescinded based on a majority vote of the board. Mr. Guarino then replied, and this is the end of, almost the end of what I have to say, which, this is his reply to me, which shows how much disrespect and contempt you have for the votes and voices of the elected officials and the people who elected them, who share membership with you on this board. And then he signed it with his name. Now, I want to make something very clear. I want to make it clear to the board. I want to make it clear to the public. And it's important that the public and the board and the administration understand the following. Given the current way, the strategic planning process has been authorized and specific limitations placed on board member participation and deliberation, I want to go on the record now, on June 11th, 2018, that I will be voting against whatever plan is put forward by the steering committee. Having said that, and my reason for that is because the board is systematically left out of the ongoing recurring discussions and deliberations. The board participation that Mr. Guarino referred to is one or perhaps two members. It's not the board. And quite frankly, I think our board is very well represented with parents, former teachers, members of the community, that we fill the gaps that the public elected us to fulfill. And I do have one question that I'd like to put out there, and I hope that Dr. Mosley can perhaps address this in his superintendent comments, is I'm, Dr. Mos, I haven't asked this question, and it really underlines my entire problem with this entire process that you've put in place. And can you please tell me, why did you deliberately exclude board members, the whole board, from directly participating in this process? Thank you.
Is there any communication outside the consent agenda?
Point of order, are we going to accept that email and put it on the record that he read? Or is it on the record because he read it? I just want to know what we do when we pull items from the agenda.
I believe it's in the minutes.
Oh, okay, so we don't have to buy, thank you.
Okay. So are there any communications outside the consent agenda? Public question, comment period limited to items on this agenda. 15-minute time limit if possible. Nobody? Okay. Moving right along, superintendents' comments.
Good evening, everyone. I will be brief, but to the point. Again, I wanted to thank Alderman Dowd and McCarthy and the mayor's office for that collaboration on the middle school project. It's just exciting to really engage in that endeavor. So we'll see what happens, and we'll stay tuned. Well, I can't believe it's been close to a year since I started, and it feels like we're going to be closing up and starting again. So with that said, we're definitely in transition mode, district-wide. Transition in the sense that we're saying goodbye. I shouldn't say goodbye. We're saying, we'll see you soon. That's a better way of phrasing that, when we think about our kids and our graduates. I don't, this is, goodness, maybe my, I want to say my 10th graduation that I've attended. And I, this is something magical and sad, but relieving, happy. I always have mixed emotions about graduation. And, you know, I will be there for both graduations. And certainly that's on Father's Day, on June 17th. The first one starts at 9:00 a.m. And the second one is followed by 9:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. I had, well, 1:00 p.m. It'd be at the Verizon Center, or known as the Southern New Hampshire University Facility. So I just, if I had something that I wanted to say time and time again, congratulations to the class of 2018. I'm so proud of you. I had an opportunity, when I was having a sneezing attack, to actually go over and stumble over there, and they stopped me, and they said hello. And I know some of them are gathered over there signing yearbooks. By far, you've worked hard for this accomplishment. Parents, you've worked hard too, so it's a little bit of your day. And Dad, you can take a little bit of credit for the day as well. So congratulations to the 2018 graduates. What's been going on district-wide, I want to, I don't know who's attended a couple of these, but we have our teachers' recognition ceremonies taking place after school. I know Madam Chair Oden has been at a couple of them. I've attended a couple of them and passed out certificates. So that's happening district-wide as well. Couple of accomplishments that I just wanted to share with the board. Number one, one of our principals, Dr. Scarpatti, was selected. One of 20 people in the state, that was, in the state, excuse me, that was selected to be on the National Practitioner Advisory Group on Using Data to Inspire Practice. So she is part of that committee. That is a statewide initiative. There are quite a few people who applied to be on this statewide initiative, and she was one of them that was selected. Another milestone, and I brought the write-up here for the board, if they wanted to take a look at this, but our elementary school, Fairgrounds Elementary School, was selected and was recognized at the Eddies. And this is for their work and partnership with the community, Kate's Closet, the End of 68 Hours of Hunger, their partnership with the community. All of those variables and factors surrounded with kids and families that they were recognized at the Eddies. When you look at it, it looks like E, it's spelled E-D-I-E-S. So it looks like E dies, but it's pronounced Eddies. But certainly, I want to congratulate Mike Harrington, his faculty, for their accomplishments. I know they worked hard. It just speaks to the volume of the... It just speaks to the volume of the commitment that our faculty has here in the district. By far, I, this, I wasn't prepared to speak too about the strategic plan, but I do have an ending for this superintendent's report. I'm proud of what I am going to be working with. Board member, Sue Porter and I talked last week about the strategic plan. We also talked about focus groups around the strategic plan. We talked about how we're going to involve not just board members, but all stakeholders, parents, teachers, community members, city hall. So with that said, the answer to Mr. Kaufman's question is that board members will have an opportunity to give their feedback. They will have an opportunity to share their opinion about what they're looking for in strategic plan. That comes in the focus groups. And the focus groups will have an opportunity to talk and, and give us all the feedback we need. There is a process in place, you know, this, we are a large district, and to get to everyone's concern, everyone's, everything is important to us. But we really, as, not just as a school district, but as a community, really have to hone down those four essential things that we want our schools to really represent and focus on, both budgetary-wise, resources, and where we want our kids to be. Finally, I, this is how I was going to conclude the superintendent's report. At this level, you see so much, but then you go to events, and you recognize what this is all about. And like, sometimes I, I was at the retirement party of Chris Breams, and I don't know if you had an opportunity, well, you're going to have an opportunity, because I'm going to share it with the board eventually, but it was the most beautiful thing I've ever seen in my life, and quite, not almost in my life, but by far up there. And there's a couple of images that come to my mind when I'm thinking about this one day. There were so many different people from so many different schools that came out to say goodbye and to acknowledge her career. I didn't know this, but I guess in Nashua, there is a tradition they have, where they sing to the teacher. And I just, like, there's a couple of things that make me tear up a little bit, is when Lulu is singing to Sidney Poitier, To Serve With Love. And then it's this. So I left a copy of the lyrics of the song that they actually sung to her, and I just thought it was so beautiful, so loving, and so kind. And I was thinking, wow, that is such a beautiful send-off to our, our, our community. But it just speaks to the testament that all these different teachers just got up from Broad Street, Central Office. I didn't even know, like, Kelly Paradise even played a guitar. But it was just so, like, beautiful, and, and it speaks to the people that work for our, with our kids. It speaks to the people that see our kids. It speaks to the people that really not just care about our kids, but they care about themselves. And I'll just kind of leave you with... I'm going to send that to the board. And when all of this, whatever this is in terms of, oh, sorry, whatever this is in terms of accusation about being shut out, about saying no, about yelling, and whatever this is, I encourage just all of us to take a step back and watch this video, and maybe, within all of us, maybe it genders some type of kindness, something that focuses back to what's important. I'm not speaking to all, but man, if you can't get teared up, if you can't feel the love and the sacrifice that these individuals have for each other and for our kids, then I don't know. But it was quite amazing. I'm going to send this to the board. I'm also going to ask the people who participate in this if it's okay to post it on Twitter, because it just, you know, I guess I, you know, I'm going to say I teared up a couple times. I teared up when I listened to the song. I also teared up when Christine Bream's husband was crying for Christine. It was just nice.
Board members' response to the superintendent's comments? I'll start over here. Ms. Van Twyver, do you have anything?
Well, I too am going to miss Ms. Bream. She was wonderful to work with, so I'm glad she had a good party.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I'll just say to Dr. Mos, I don't feel as though you've answered my question. Limiting board member feedback to focus groups is, quite frankly, inadequate, and it's still taking away the responsibilities that the public has given us, you by replacing our knowledge. We have at least three parents and grandparents on this board. We have two retired teachers. We know what the community wants, that's why they elected us. You're denying, through your proposal and the board's acceptance of it, our responsibilities to do our jobs, and I'm still not happy. Thank you.
Ms. Hoensie?
Thank you, for a couple of comments. As to the strategic plan, the topic is trust. I was disappointed to hear that the teachers, the first time in maybe 20 years, were asked to return their keys at the end of the year. I don't know how many teachers use their keys to go in and, and work on their classrooms over the summer, but I don't think it demonstrates trust. I'd like to know when we're going to have a hearing for those para-food and secretaries' bargaining units, their grievance over the inequitable labor treatment on the last day of school, hopefully before the last day of school, or after the fact, there's not much that can be done. And then I'd like to know, when does the board approve the appointments to the strategic plan? Is Ms. Porter on it? Was that just the declaration? Has the whole board been appointed? You know, there's a lot of things that the board doesn't know, and again, it's disappointing.
Ms. Timmons?
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. I think you're doing a wonderful job, and thank you for the information on the strategic plan. However, in order to move forward, we have to trust that you know what you're doing, and I'm not disappointed in the things that you have done and continue to do for our district. One of the things that we forget, and we lose focus, is not about the board, it's about our children, moving our children where they need to go. I have so many children, and I'm going, I have a new one going into kindergarten this fall, and I don't need the bickering and the insults that my children would hear from board members when the superintendent himself is trying to do the best that he can possibly do. I think we need to remember, we hired him for a reason, and we should let him do that, do what he needs to do. We are not educators. We are just elected officials to make sure that the city, district schools move forward. And we have not done that adequately, because we're too busy accusing and fighting and calling each other names, and I really resent that from happening, because my kids hear this stuff. And I, I just truly resent that. So thank you very much. My children met you, and thank you for coming to the funeral last week. They were surprised. I was surprised to see you there. What superintendent traveled that distance to do that for a board member? It was very kind. So I'm still grieving, so I didn't like being called the idiot, or over my head, or any of those things. So thank you very much for all that you do, and all that you continue to do, not just for the board members, for the city. Thank you.
Ms. Porter?
I think it's a breath of fresh air when we hear about things that are happening in schools with our students and with our faculty. Faculty are very close, they're family. You work together day in and day out, and you care deeply about each other, so I know a party is a great way to celebrate a whole career of dedication. And when we're discussing things, I always try to keep in the back of my mind, is what we're doing moving the district forward or not? And is it having a direct impact on, on students? And I, and I hope that we can operate with that as our, our standard. So thank you for your comment.
Thank you. I have just two quick things. One, I'm also very sad to see Ms. Bream go. I just think she was fantastic. Big shoes to fill, although I think we have a wonderful, wonderful replacement. The second thing is, the teacher recognition ceremonies that have been happening, I think, are wonderful. I personally can't attend, because I have kids at school, and after school, I parent them. But I would love to have a list of the teachers who have been recognized, because I think that's important, and I would like to know who the other teachers are choosing as being the best examples. So, thank you.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. Sometimes I have to keep going back to the, to our website to make sure that I'm on the Board of Education. Sometimes I think I'm on the House Committee on Un-American Activities. There's so much accusatory rhetoric around here. And this is a democratic process, okay? We, on this board, should respect the votes of other people. We have a, a, we have, we have accepted Dr. Mosley's process, his planning process on the strategic plan. It is, it is going to be staffed by professionals. He has a list that he gave us. We have so much, so much resources in our, in our district, our teachers. They did leader presentations that could be easily part-plugged into this. They're, they're very willing and enthusiastic. I've been looking at the videos, and I'm sorry I missed those leadership presentations. They're giving constructive, positive feedback. So we have so much going for us. Oh, my time's up. Oh, no, okay. We have so much going for us in this district. We need to stay positive. There are not two people on this committee that own this committee that can talk, 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 and dominate everything. This is a committee of nine, okay? This is a democratic process, and we respect the votes of all the people on this committee. And I fully expect that Dr. Mosley is going to bring in all stakeholders, parents, teachers, administrators, and, and I know that's going to happen, because I trust him, and he's been doing a good job thus far. Thank you.
Okay. I would just like to remind people that part of the strategic plan is one of Dr. Mosley's job, in Dr. Mosley's job description. So I have confidence that he'll lead it, and, and we will get lots of feedback. And Dr. Mosley had asked me, as president, would I like to be on the strategic plan? And quite frankly, I, I do have another life. I begin to wonder sometimes, but Ms. Porter asked me if she could be on it. She was interested in it. She did not get to choose whatever committee she wanted to be on. She was assigned to committee openings, and I thought it was fair to give her that. So I want to thank her, because I know it's going to be a big-time commitment, so. Student members of the board.
Just one quick comment. So last week was the voter registration drive at Nashua South and Nashua North. This took place during lunches, so the city clerk came, and she registered 28 students at South. And this was for, if they were turning 18 before the September 11th primary. And then at North, they registered 33 voters.
Yeah, so in terms of like, the middle school projects, obviously, we talked about earlier, as like, a former student in the middle schools, I'm kind of glad that we're considering equity among the middle schools. I went to Penachuck, and when I was in middle school, often seemed like it was like Elm Street, and then Penachuck and Fairgrounds. And I think that's like, mostly due to the population. Elm Street obviously has a much bigger population, and then also the size of the building, but also athletic fields, like was mentioned earlier. Elm Street literally doesn't have any athletic fields, and so I know that it was pretty hard for kids to have to bus over, just to play soc, to like, practice soccer every single day, to bus over to a different location. And then also athletic competition, so I know, since Elm Street has a bigger popul, a larger population, they participate in a division above Fairgrounds and Penachuck, and so Fairgrounds and Penachuck don't compete with Elm Street pretty much in any sports, and I think they should compete with each other, because that would just show like, the equity in the system. And so I think that it's important to consider that, and I'm pretty glad that we are considering equity among the middle schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sweeney and Mr. Gillis. Okay, committee on the budget. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mosher?
Yes, thank you. Listening to Dr. Mosley and the idea of the strategic plan, I think we've got it pretty well covered as far as the participants and to the various areas. I think that one of the areas that we, that was not mentioned, was from the commercial area, from the businesses and so on, that we could recruit some people to come in, and I'm sure that they would have some good ideas for the strategic plan, and especially in forwarding our CTE. So it might be a good idea to enlist some people from the local businesses. That's what I have to add to it.
Thank you. Committee on the budget.
Thank you. We have a meeting scheduled for this Wednesday at 6:30 p.m. in this, in this room. It's scheduled as a tentative meeting. Originally, we were thinking that, based on the Aldermanic action, that would trigger our committee to meet. Based upon Alderman's, Alderman McCarthy's comments tonight, that the Aldermen are likely not to act until, what was it, the 26th? Thank you. That leaves us three days to the end of the month, essentially to complete our work, if we wait until that event to occur at the Aldermanic level. I recommend that we meet this week, and we start the process. I think what we need is a good discussion as to what the recommendations are from the administration, to how do we reduce 900, and I think it's $973,000 and change, out of our budget, to go from the 3.41 down to a 2.5, which was the mayor's original recommendation. I spoke with Mrs. Oden a little bit earlier. She wanted to put it before the board, if we should meet this Wednesday and start discussion. I did send out an agenda to everybody, and I solicited input from everybody before I sent it out. My intent is to discuss all of those things before we finalize the budget, but clearly we need a proposal from the administration. They identified the needs of the original budget. It's only fitting that they identify a revised budget that sticks, or that complies with the budgetary recommendations by the mayor. When I spoke with Mr. Alderman McCarthy, he thought that the mayor's proposal would be likely approved by the Alderman. I think it's prudent for us to do that. I think we owe due diligence to the people in Nashua. So I'll just make a motion, just so we can formalize it and have discussion. I move to convene a budget committee meeting this Wednesday at 6:30 p.m. in this room to conduct budget deliberations, to meet the budgetary guidelines of the mayor at 2.5% over last year.
Second.
I think I've spoken to my motion.
Spoken to your motion, okay. Is there anybody who would like to? Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. Dr. Mosley and Mr. Donovan, will you have a proposal prepared by Wednesday? One, and two, what happens if we, say we decide to cut certain line items at our meeting Wednesday, and then we find out that the budget is something other than what we expect? Is it, is, are those votes binding? What, what happens in that circumstance? So those would be my two questions.
I would answer that, that we would have to recalibrate according to whatever number they gave us.
We, we can have some recommendations prepared to the board by Wednesday.
So is there consensus to meet on Wednesday?
Not with me.
I object also.
Could we take a vote?
I'd like to speak on it also.
Okay.
If this budget does meet, this budget committee meets, I resent the power grab by the budget committee chairman, who thinks he can take all the power away from the committee and change the rules. They're cockamamie rules, is what they are, okay? They're contrary to Robert's rules, number one. And number two, you cannot take the privileges and power of the elected board and put them into the chair. So I will not meet, I will not even entertain those kinds of changes in the rules. And I think it's an insult, and I resent it.
Ms. Hohensy.
Thank you. I think the chair codified what we essentially did for the previous two budget sessions, or seasons, pretty much letting, after all the presentations were given, the committee met as a whole. We deliberated on line items. We let everybody ask questions on as many line items that they were interested in, and then we voted on the overall budget. I don't see that as a departure from what I did the previous two years.
Ms. Porter? So I can understand having a meeting to start discussions, but it seems a bit premature to take a vote. So I might be open to discussing what the presentation is and hearing the presentation, but I wouldn't feel comfortable voting on anything until we have the actual budget back from the Aldermen. So, Mr. Kaufman, is that what would happen? Because I think I would not be in favor of a meeting if we're going to start voting before we get it back. But I might be in favor of, you know, hearing the presentation and having time to think about it.
May I respond?
Mr. Kaufman?
Ms. Porter, I don't think we need to have a binding vote to approve, as you suggest, we don't know what the final number is, so we can't really approve our budget until we know what that final number is. So to that extent, I concur that there doesn't need to be a binding vote. Well, no, I'm going to try and address, the process that the board has used in the past is that anyone on the board, anyone on the board, can make a suggestion to modify, add to, or subtract from a spending item in the budget, or even add a new budget line item, for that matter. And each of those things is discussed. It's treated as a motion, essentially. And then we all discuss it, and we vote as a body to either accept that proposal or not. Mr. Donovan kind of keeps a running tally as to how much we've added, how much we've subtracted, how it relates to the original proposal, how it would relate to the 2.5%. So to the extent of approving a complete budget at the end, I don't think we need to do that at all until we get the final number from the Aldermen, which I think is consistent with part of what you said. But the process that we've used in the past is deliberative, and it is a vote on each of the line items. And when I sent out my agenda, I listed, I think, 18 different things that I would like the committee to consider. And anyone else is free to add something else to be discussed.
Ms. Porter, do you want to respond?
I understand that, and I think that being deliberate and thoughtful about these things is important. And I would be willing to come on Wednesday if that's what we're doing. But I don't see any point in taking votes until the actual budget comes back. So if we have things on the table, you know, these are possibilities that we could change, or things that we could add or delete, I think that would be valuable. But I think it's premature to take a vote ahead of getting the actual budget back. So I see a lot of value in hearing the proposal from Dr. Mosley and Mr. Donovan. And I would welcome hearing ideas from other members of the board, just to have on the table. But personally, I don't want to be here for any votes before it comes back. And if that's what's on the agenda, then I will vote not to meet.
I'm next.
Mr. Mosher?
Yeah, I kind of agree with the last speaker. I'm not in agreement with that cockamamie list that we have. But I think that we should leave things lie until we get a bottom line. And then we can sit down and we can do some meaningful deliberation on what we can add or subtract. But until that time, we are just playing games with numbers. And that's not constructive at all. That's a waste of time. So I feel that would be unnecessary to go through and start playing with it until we have a bottom line. Once it comes back from City Hall with the Aldermen, and we have the final number, that's what we can work to. Before that, forget about it. You're just blowing smoke.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Thank you, Madam President. Our fiscal year starts July 1, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, Mr. Donovan, if we don't have a budget approved, what happens on July 1? Do we pay bills? Do we do anything? What can we do?
Well, we could pay bills. I mean, there's a payroll due July 5, I believe. That would still be paid. But the budget, the 3.41% budget, let's assume it's the 2.5% that the mayor said, we would have to, at some point, cut that $975,000 out.
So then maybe projects that wouldn't get started on time?
Possibly.
Well, we're coming down the wire here, folks. I think we need to be here on Wednesday night to start talking about this. This is not the fun time for budgets, I'm telling you. So...
Mr. Greeno?
Thank you, Madam President. And let's be clear, we're talking two different things here. We're talking about deliberation over the budget, and then we're talking about rule changes. And there was a whole bunch of cockamamie rule changes, which were separate, taking away people's microphones, okay? This is not how you did things in the past, okay? It's a power grab. And that's the problem we had earlier in this year when we were here with the budget. You try to change the rules on us, okay? That's why I'm animated right now. I have no problem with deliberation with the budget, you know? But let's not change the rules on us. I'm not for that. This is a democratic process. You're taking away the rights and privileges of the members. We have nine members of the board. The chairman of the budget committee does not get to be king, okay? He does not get to direct everything and everybody, all right? So let's be clear about that. This is a democratic process. Now, and so I'm perfectly willing to wait, and I agree with Mr. Mosher.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Permit me to share with the public the content of my proposal for budget committee ground rules for deliberations. I want the public to fully understand what has been categorized as a power grab.
Excuse me?
No, I think I've been challenged. It's been called a power grab. It's been called ridiculous.
Point of order.
I would like to do this, please.
It's almost 10 minutes, and I'm just going to ask you, could you be brief on this and do it quickly?
This has been declared to be a power grab, and in actuality, it's determined to give maximum voice to the board. And I think the public needs to understand it, because it's been mischaracterized, or perhaps misunderstood by the board. I will be as quick as I can be. I had not intended to read this until the content was disparaged.
Point of order. I'm objecting to consideration of this question at this time. This is a matter to be discussed at the budget meeting, not at the main board meeting. So, you know, at this point, it is not an effective use of our time or the public's time to continue to discuss how the budget meeting shall be run according to the rules. If we have the meeting, then we should have a vote on his proposal. If we don't have the meeting, then we have the vote at the time that we do. At this point, I'm objecting to this entire line, which is part of Robert's rules. I've looked it up. Yes, I'm allowed to interrupt for that.
I agree with you. It's almost 5 minutes to 9. I realize we had presentation, but we have two administrators here, who are here for a particular reason. We've asked for, we have board members that have asked for, non-public. They said they have lots of questions. I think it's unfair to them to leave them hanging. It's now almost 5 minutes of 9. We're going to have to vote to extend the meeting another half hour, another 30 minutes. And I think you're right, Ms. Raymond. This is a budget issue. It will come up at the budget, and we will vote on accepting these rules or not.
Point of order. My objection to considering the question requires a vote, and I believe it's a 2/3 majority. And then we still have the motion on the floor, on whether or not we're going to have the budget meeting.
May I speak?
Just a minute. Will you need a motion on that?
There's no debate.
The motion is, I object to consideration of this question.
There's no debate.
Why? Is that true?
Okay, so the objection would be, no, we do not take up this motion. Mr. Mosher?
What is the motion?
The motion is to convene Wednesday, 6:30, to conduct budget deliberations.
No, the motion is objection of the consideration of the question, which is the discussion of the rules to be held on Wednesday's meeting. So a yes vote is that, yes, we object to it. We're not going to discuss it.
Actually, a no vote would be an objection, to hold your objection, wouldn't it?
No, I don't think so.
No. Yes, upholds the objection. No...
Yes, upholds the objection? Okay.
Would not uphold the objection.
So a yes upholds the objection. Actually, she ruled them out of order, so we don't need to vote on it.
Well, it's...
She did say, she said out of order.
Okay. So it's not debatable. I suggest we simply vote.
So a yes is an objection?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mosher, do you object?
I object.
Yes, okay. Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensy?
No.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
So the objection holds. We have 7 to 2.
So now we vote on the motion by Mr. Kaufman to have the meeting on Wednesday.
May I speak? Just a minute. Ms. Hohensy?
Thank you. I didn't even know what we were voting on, but thank you very much. I think if we have the meeting, the administration can present its potential cuts. If the membership of the board doesn't want to go into the items, at that point, they can move to adjourn. The majority will prevail. It's not a big danger to have a meeting on Wednesday. That was all I was trying to say.
Ms. Porter?
Okay, so am I to understand that if we meet on Wednesday, we will hear the presentation from Dr. Mosley and Mr. Donovan, and perhaps have some discussion, but there will be no voting? Am I correct?
No, we're going to decide that on Wednesday.
Would you like to amend?
Decide that on Wednesday.
One person at a time, please, in which you recognize...
I just want to be sure what I'm voting on doing on Wednesday.
No, the objection to the consideration of these rules about Wednesday was that we'll decide that Wednesday.
No, I understand that, because he presented it as a motion that will have to be voted on at the beginning of the budget meeting, correct?
Yes.
So that's a separate issue from what I'm thinking. What I'm saying is, once we've voted on that, if the meeting were to proceed, is it going to be informational-based, or are we going to start voting on budget items? I just want to know, if I come, what am I doing?
Ms. Hohensy, you've spoken twice. Can we call on somebody who's...
I just want to make a point of order. At the meeting, we can always vote to adjourn at any point. There is no danger.
I think you stated that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Timmons?
Thank you, Ms. Oden. I'm not going to come, no matter what. So if you guys vote, I think it's a waste of time. We'll spend an hour listening to one person chatter. I don't have that time. I do have a life. I will not attend. So my answer will be no. I will not come on Wednesday. So I don't want to listen to a bunch of verbiage on what we should and should not do, based on the information that we were presented by Mr. Kaufman. I think it's a complete waste of time. You might have that time to be wasted? I don't. I'm a busy person.
Anybody else?
Dr. Mosley?
I'm just thinking about some compromises and people's schedules and stuff. I think it would be prudent of us, including myself and Dan and the people that might be involved. I believe Alderman McCarthy said that on the 26th, they're going to take that final vote. So I think it would be incumbent on us to plan on something on the 27th.
I think if people could keep the 26th, I didn't have a calendar. I was trying to get it on my phone. 27th, 28th, and 29th. I think if people can keep those dates open...
I was just thinking that, no matter what, we still need to have some vote on the budget. So, in terms of compromise, I'm thinking, no matter if we, even if we meet on the 13th or subsequent other days, we're finally going to get that number by the 26th of the Aldermen. The Aldermen, I believe, is meeting on the 26th, and then we'll finally know exactly the outcome of that. In terms of, again, I'm just thinking about compromise. I'm just trying to get information out. We can certainly make, you know, recommendations, what it feels like to get down to that 2-point, that number that the mayor has suggested via email for people to consider, or certainly whatever the board would like to do, were available to accommodate people's requests. But I do recommend to the board that at least keep that 27th or 28th available, because we do need to have a final vote.
So just a point of information.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. Point of information, the JSSBC is on the 28th.
That's a Saturday.
20, I'm sorry.
The 28th is a Thursday.
The 28th is a Thursday. So the Aldermen will be Tuesday. We already have a tentative budget meeting on Wednesday, but Thursday is the JSSBC here.
We do not have one for the 28th.
Oh, we don't?
Excuse me?
Okay. I just wrote on my calendar for every Wednesday.
Yeah, this is, I'm sorry.
Okay.
This is 26, 27, 28. I gave you the wrong month.
Okay. So the 27th, 28th, 29th?
27th, 28th, 29th.
And the 29th is the day before the vacation, right? The long weekend, Memorial Day weekend? So I guess I would ask people to keep the 27th and 28th open.
Fine with me.
No, the 28th already has a meeting scheduled, the JSSBC, here in this room at 7:00 PM.
Could we meet at 5?
Well, yeah, I can.
Ms. Van Twyver?
5 o'clock? To meet before that meeting? You'd never get the budget down then. Mr. Donovan, are you okay with not having an approved budget on July 1?
Personally, I'm okay with it. I'm not going to spend it all in one day. So, but I, you know, I guess I can check tomorrow to see if there's any specific deadline.
All right.
You know, I made a note of that, and I'll find out. But, you know, in my sense, if we do, excuse me, have it on the 27th, I don't see why we can't get it done in one night. But I get a great list.
Mr. Donovan, you've been in these budget meetings for years. You know better.
Ms. Hohensy?
Could we skip, forego the meeting Wednesday, and get by email the superintendent or Mr. Donovan's recommendation, just so, as Ms. Porter said, we could start thinking about what cuts? And sort of expedite this thing. I'll withdraw my second.
That sounds like a compromise, sure.
So you will email us your recommendations?
Sure.
And we will put on the calendar the 27th for a meeting.
Okay. So you want it like a week before, or two weeks before?
No, Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Yeah.
You agreed to Wednesday.
No, I did, but then you moved it two weeks, so I'm just checking.
Put it in the packet for the 25th.
I can get it before that, if you want it before that.
Yeah. As early as you can.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gillis?
I was just going to remind you of the time.
Yeah, oh, it's, we've got to vote.
Timekeeper, thank you.
Mrs. Oden, where do we stand? We have a motion on the floor for the 13th. We haven't voted on that.
The second was withdrawn.
Are you willing to withdraw your motion?
I'm uncertain. So we're moving the 13th to the 27th? Is that the net decision?
That's how I understand it.
I just want to be clear. I mean, there's been all this chatter. Fine. I am unavailable the 28th. I'll be out of state. So that's the only night that week I have available.
Okay. Thank you. So there's no motion on the floor at this point? We will have something in our packet this week that talks about it, and we will have on the calendar a meeting on the 27th. Okay? Ms. Raymond?
I'd like to move to extend our meeting for a half an hour, since we have quite a bit of our agenda still ahead of us.
Second.
Roll call.
On the motion to extend the meeting, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
I have a question of the chair. Is this the amended recommendations?
To suspend the rules.
Oh, to suspend the rules, yes.
Mrs. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay. Thank you. So there's no motion on the floor at this point? We will have something in our packet this week that talks about it, and we will have on the calendar a meeting on the 27th.
Okay? Ms. Raymond?
I'd like to move to extend our meeting for a half an hour, since we have quite a bit of our agenda still ahead of us.
Second.
Roll call.
On the motion to extend the meeting, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Committee on Finance and Operations?
Oh, I'm sorry. Tomorrow, we have a meeting at 6:30 here. That's our next meeting. So we have nothing to report.
Thank you. Committee on Policy?
Our next meeting is Tuesday, the 19th, at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Committee on Curriculum Evaluation?
Our next meeting is the 18th, Monday, and it's going to be on data.
Thank you. Committee on Human Resources?
Yes, committee met earlier today, this evening. We were recommendation approved the personnel recommendation.
Second. Point of order, we have to move to overturn the rules because this is, it was held the same meeting, same evening, and we don't have the minutes written up, and it's not in our packet. So we have to move to overturn the rules.
You can suspend the rules, but quite frankly, that hasn't always been done.
Okay. I recommend that we suspend the rules to move the minutes, the meeting from June 11th early, that we had earlier this evening, for recommendation approved personnel recommendations.
Second. Roll call.
On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
I have a question of the chair. Is this the amended recommendations?
To suspend the rules.
Oh, to suspend the rules, yes.
Mrs. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay, we have recommendation approved administrative recommendations, which is Amanda Saroni, Assistant Principal at Mount Pleasant Elementary School, New Surles Elementary School, for the 2018-19 school year at an annual salary of $73,000.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
I have a question of the chair. Is this the amended recommendations?
To suspend the rules.
Oh, to suspend the rules, yes.
Mrs. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay. On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
I have a question of the chair. Is this the amended recommendations?
To suspend the rules.
Oh, to suspend the rules, yes.
Mrs. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay, next on new business, the approval of the Nashua Education Foundation grants.
Move to...
Dr. McKinney? Did you want to speak to those?
Included in your packet, it is a listing of grants totaling just about $14,000 from the Nashua Education Foundation for a number of schools. I'd just like to thank the Nashua Education Foundation for their support and ask the board to kindly accept these grants for the high schools, Amherst Street, Birch Hill, and Led Street. Thank you.
Move to accept the grants in total of $13,743.53. Second.
Looking for a roll call?
On the motion to accept the approval of the Nashua Education Foundation grants, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Our next meeting is June 20th, 2018, at 5:30.
Madam Chair, do we accept the...
Motion carries nine to zero.
Can I ask, did the first motion to suspend the rules to approve the personnel recommendations, was that included in that motion?
Yes.
That was? Okay. So that we've taken care of that.
Point of order.
Ms. Hohensy?
I just wanted to point out that it was Mount Pleasant School, not New Surles, for the administrative recommendation. And... It's Mount Pleasant and New Surles. Oh, she's both schools?
Yes.
Talking about the, yeah, it's both schools. So she's half-time in each? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I didn't know that. And for the personnel recommendations, I don't know if the full board, Ms. Raymond wasn't here, there were some modifications in a revised list that we were going on.
Yes, thank you. I got the update and the time before our meeting started.
And the minutes will reflect that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We have a correction on the salary. It's $73,500.
Okay.
We have $73,000 on this piece of paper here, so $73,500.
Okay. Do we... Ms. Van Twyver?
We accept the personnel recommendations? Oh, okay.
Uh-huh. Yes. Okay.
You stepped, oh, excuse me.
Liaison reports.
Stepped to 500.
I thought she skipped over you, but I did mind.
Anybody?
No, I'd like to point out that the student counselors, board members are leaving. They won't be at the next board meeting. They'll be leaving on the 22nd to go to St. Paul's. And so we like to wish them good luck there.
I second that. And I would like to acknowledge Haley Sweeney was part of the Granite State Challenge team that, I guess there were two teams from south this year from reading here, Haley?
So this was the South History Bowl. So the Granite State Challenge team competed as one team, and there were other teams from like other classes that competed.
Okay. Well, that was a nice picture of you and your classmates in there. And before you go, I'd like to give this to you, so. And good luck to you, both of you, at St. Paul's. Now, you'll be back in September. Will you?
Our last day there is July 29th, so we'll be back at the board meetings after that.
Okay. Thank you, and best of luck. Best of luck. Thank you. Okay, any liaisons?
I did go to the Memorial Day service here at North. The Honor Society just did a fantastic job. The band, the junior rotse, the chorus, it was top dog, and they had an absolutely wonderful speaker. So thank you to them and all their hard work. So. Unfinished business, memorandum of understanding raises and retro pay.
At this time, I'm going to recommend to the board that we table it, only because we, Trent Cosson had a family matter, and we weren't able to get that information to the board. So at the next board meeting or subsequent meetings, we'll certainly have that for the board to review.
Okay. And there's a request for an additional work session for the information log, the request log. And that's by Mr. Kaufman. I'm hoping that July is okay with him. As you can tell, June is pretty filled up, and we will do that work session. We will schedule that for sometime in July.
Okay. The middle two weeks are, I'm gone the last third, fourth weeks of July and the first week of August.
Okay, we'll try to get it in probably the second week, because the fourth is in the first week. So why don't we, we'll try to schedule it for that second week. Okay? New business, approval of the Nashua Education Foundation grants.
Move to...
Dr. McKinney? Did you want to speak to those?
Included in your packet, it is a listing of grants totaling just about $14,000 from the Nashua Education Foundation for a number of schools. I'd just like to thank the Nashua Education Foundation for their support and ask the board to kindly accept these grants for the high schools, Amherst Street, Birch Hill, and Led Street. Thank you.
Move to accept the grants in total of $13,743.53. Second.
Looking for a roll call?
On the motion to accept the approval of the Nashua Education Foundation grants, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay, next on new business, the approval of the Nashua Association of School Principals, or NASP, the contract dated 2018 through 2022. We have been asked to have a non-public session as, there were some board members that have questions pertaining to this. I know for the teacher's contract, we had it in public. I don't know if that creates a problem or not.
Are you calling on me, Madam Chair? Because I see some hands up, and I don't want to be rude.
Ms. Hohensy?
I move that we go into non-public under RSA 91A 32A and Section C, one for this contract and another for personnel matter. Should be very brief.
Second.
I have a concern. We have two administrators sitting up there, and if we go into non-public, there's something that's not what they are here for. I don't want to extend their time, sitting here waiting for us to come out of non-public. Would you have a problem coming out and going back in, or is it connected?
It's not connected. I don't mind if they want to come in. I just don't want to ask questions in public about a contract before we approve it, because it discloses the contract. And if there's any problem with it going forward, you don't do that in public. I have no problem with the two principals being in for that part of the non-public session. Last five minutes, they could step out into the hall.
I'd like them to be part of the discussion, so I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. So do you have a second for your motion?
I did second.
Second it, okay. Roll call.
On the motion to go into non-public, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay, next on new business, the approval of the Nashua Association of School Principals, or NASP, the contract dated 2018 through 2022. We have been asked to have a non-public session as, there were some board members that have questions pertaining to this. I know for the teacher's contract, we had it in public. I don't know if that creates a problem or not.
Are you calling on me, Madam Chair? Because I see some hands up, and I don't want to be rude.
Ms. Hohensy?
I move that we go into non-public under RSA 91A 32A and Section C, one for this contract and another for personnel matter. Should be very brief.
Second.
I have a concern. We have two administrators sitting up there, and if we go into non-public, there's something that's not what they are here for. I don't want to extend their time, sitting here waiting for us to come out of non-public. Would you have a problem coming out and going back in, or is it connected?
It's not connected. I don't mind if they want to come in. I just don't want to ask questions in public about a contract before we approve it, because it discloses the contract. And if there's any problem with it going forward, you don't do that in public. I have no problem with the two principals being in for that part of the non-public session. Last five minutes, they could step out into the hall.
I'd like them to be part of the discussion, so I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. So do you have a second for your motion?
I did second.
Second it, okay. Roll call.
On the motion to go into non-public, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Did it, right?
Excuse me?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Move to bring the last item of new business to the next meeting, because we're fried.
Second.
The non-disclosure confidentiality agreement. I don't think we want to start that, so move into next.
That needs to go to HR. I had told Howard the other night, that's an HR issue. That's not really a board issue. That needs to go to HR.
Their nondisclosures, we don't know what they are. And they're not limited, I don't believe, just to HR.
Well, it's an HR issue.
But we have no assurance it's going to be brought forward. There's other things that this board has referred to committee that has still not been heard. It's been several months. So I'm concerned that if you do refer it to committee, it will not be heard. So if you do move it, I'll accept the move with a date at which it will be heard.
Or with priority. Date certain.
I'm not going to get into that game.
Well, that's what it is, Mrs. Oden. It's all a game. The chair doesn't bring forward legitimate things.
A motion to adjourn. Excuse me.
Not you.
I told you it would go to HR. It'll be on the agenda. They might have some things before that.
The fact is, Mrs. Oden, we don't...
They had a policy tonight that's going back to HR.
But it's an incomplete policy. They would not discuss the previous policy change that was sitting in that committee for six months. That chair refused to hear it. And I'm concerned it's going to happen again on this referral. So we've wasted our time even referring something to committee, because that chair is so obstinate and does not bring things forward. Anybody could see what I'm talking about if you watched tonight's meeting.
We'll see what we're talking about, how ridiculous you've been all evening. Now, stop it. You just stop it. You did enough, and you did enough damage. Okay? It's done. You stopped doing that nonsense that you've been doing from day one, since we started on the board. You are not an emperor, and stop pretending you are. Now, I'm done with you. So would you stop? See, that's what I'm talking about, the ignorance of you.
Are you going to resign? You're going to leave the board?
No, I'm not. I want you to. But I'm waiting for 2019.
Ms. Madam Chair?
Here, fast enough.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Roll call.
Roll call on the motion to adjourn. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned at 10:50 PM.
55.
50. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00. 5:00.